Not come to the committee for review, but in those minutes they suggested that the policy was coming back for review at the Policy Committee meeting, but in fact, we did vote three zero, because there were only three of the four board members were there. We did vote three zero in favor of referring the policy to the full board. So, and this happened at our October 4th policy meeting. So, I did see some, there were some correspondence amongst members of the Policy Committee meeting asking some questions, so I did contact, do some research on other towns, that, other boards of ed that have this policy, and so far, I found out that Greenwich, Stratford, Shelton, and District Nine all have remote attendance, participation, and voting. And I have a CES board meeting on Thursday, and I expect to see more of my, more colleagues from other boards there, and we'll, we'll find out more of what, what other, what other boards have done. And I think it was pointed out also in this email correspondence that the city's Board of Estimate does have a remote attendance policy.
Is this going to go back to the committee before we take it up in December?
It, it doesn't necessarily need to. I think Heidi was trying to schedule, you know, reschedule today's board meeting, today's Policy Committee meeting, you know, to have one in case there was a desire for there to be further discussion. And she was just, she was, I, she had said she was going to send out an email, I don't know if she did or not, proposing November 15th before our next board meeting to have a Policy Committee meeting at that time, if, and we could also go over the remote, or the, what is it called, the homeschooling.
homeschooling.
Discussion, because the December policy meeting, we really need to, we're hoping to have the wellness policy, to be able to start on a wellness policy. So, I think Heidi had wanted to do this November 15th meeting, assuming the committee members, and Frank Kistensky could be there.
Any other comments, Shirley?
Yes. I'm the board member that sent the email earlier in regards to this policy. And I'm just going to briefly read the email. It says, "Dear Heidi, I notice on, that on the board agenda for tonight under information report, policy 9823, electronic participation in board meetings listed. Although I was unable to attend the last policy meeting, I read the minutes of October 4th that the mini-draft for 9323 document will be presented at the next policy meeting for further review. Then it will be forwarded to the full board for approval. I'm confused to why it's not on the Policy Committee agenda for tonight, instead it's on the board agenda. On top of that, the documents attached for the public under information report does not give more details. In the past, I've mentioned my concerns about fast-tracking policies with minimal or no public community input, especially new policies. This new policy given about an hour and a half of time, is not enough time to fully examine the policy or get public community input. I don't see the need to fast-track a new policy without fully examining all aspects of the effect it would have on our district and children, unless this is an urgent need that will benefit or be detrimental to our children. I'm not sure, at the last policy meeting, additional documents were given out, other than the policy itself, that gave more details on this new policy. If so, can I please get copies? Also, I have not seen where the public have received in-depth information on this new policy. If there's any documents pertaining to this policy, can we please share with the public? After briefly reviewing the CT education law, I was not able to find language in regards to electronic participation on school boards. I was hoping to address this at our next policy meeting, as well as having an ongoing discussion on the mini-draft policy. We took our time with the School Governors Council policy, and we are currently working on the wellness policy. I think we need to bring the policy back to the committee, to reach out more for public community input, as well as getting key answers to key questions such as, what is the rationale for implementing this policy? Who does it benefit? Is it a few or all? Is this policy being used in other districts? Do we put in place safeguards against abuse? Do we, do we look into restrictions? Do we have the public community input? Is this policy being implemented on other boards, common council? What is the history of this policy? There are a few questions I have, and many more, that needs to be answered. My biggest concern is that we are entering a policy that, to my knowledge, has not been implemented within our city or any other board, common council. And we do want to have input from the public community to weigh in. Of course, after sending that email, I received a few emails back from board members, and I want to thank, you know, Mr. Lyons came back, and he informed me that the BET has a policy, and he sent me the document. Again, going back to my reasoning why I, I believe that we should bring it back to the Policy Committee and start to really dig into this and see what's going on, is that the policy that he gave, came from Tom Mooney, a, a document that he said came from Tom Mooney, discussing electronic means, but this document is dated July 11, 2013. Now, I have a document here from the journal, CAE, CAE is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, that's over all of our districts, where we go in and try to make sure that we all are on the same page. And there's an article from Tom Mooney, the Nutmeg Board of Education, question is remote access legal? And in this article, it's something that's kind of, that's kind of like different from what he did in his July 11, 2013 article. And this article is dated November 2014. So, this is one that's most recent in that one. So, I, now, these are the type of questions that I would like to have answered, to make sure that we're on the same page. CAE does not support this type of thing, and I would like to know why. And there, there's a lot of questions that have to go with, and I understand, I looked at, at our DIRF, and, and decided that our area is Ansonia, Danbury, Derby, East Hartford, Meriden, Norwalk, North Stanford, and West, West Haven. Now, I heard tonight that, we checked with Greenwich, Stratford, District Nine, those are not part of our, our demographics. And felt that there, and a concern of else, there's a lot of questions here. I want to find out what, what, again, what do we have in, on, what do have in place in case board members, you know, if there's nothing in it? And I did pull out a couple of, um, policy from a couple of different districts, and which that is, you know, and which it states and puts in writing what the limitations are, so that we have something in place. I mean, I know, I understand, and that we need that, that, you know, for having, you know, electronic meetings and all that, but I, I think it's very important that we have the community be part of this and weigh in on it, because they're the ones that elected to put us in office and come here and sit at this table. And when they come to the mic to talk to someone, sometimes they might want to have a, a person that's in the chair that they can talk to. If they can't sit here and do something remotely, then, you know, why, why, why should we be given that, that privilege to do it, or better yet, to take advantage of it? Once or twice might, might be one thing, but if we don't have anything put in place with a policy that can sit there and control that, then we're in trouble. And, and although we know that this, this was brought up before in 2014, we had some reservations, but my strong concern is that there was only an hour and a half of discussion. And if we keep going down this road, or keep putting policy through with just that little bit of time to, to look at it, deal with all these, these questions, and, and deal with, and find out what the public really wants, then what else is going to be, be, you know, sent down, down, down the pipe? So, we need to sit here, I'm not saying that I'm against the policy or for it, I'm just saying that we need to vet this policy the, the way it needs to be vetted. There's a lot of questions. I have all these questions here that need to be addressed. And I don't see any harm, I mean, what, what's the rush? I don't see any harm coming, going back to the Policy Committee so we can look at this, talk to Tom Mooney, figure out which one of his piece is he's referring to, because in 2013, he said, you know, he said one thing, 2014, he said something totally different. So, what does that mean? Was there some type of litigation that happened afterwards? Is, is that why he changed his, his mind? So, I mean, I'm trying to look at to make sure that we don't step into something that we might be part of that litigation at some point. So, that's why I asked to have it looked at, and because there's a lot of things in here. And then, and again, speaking from the taxpayer, voters, the community, I think that they should be a part of this and have some kind of say on whether or not they, they want to see their board members at the table. And the fact that our common council, they don't have it, even with our House of Representatives here, they don't have it. So, you know, I understand, yes, BET, but I need to find out more about that, how that process is going, and did it work out, or, or, or is it working? All these are questions that need to be asked, and I don't see why it cannot go back to the Policy Committee just to sit there and answer and get some of these questions addressed, and then try to tweak this policy a little bit to put some kind of constraint or restriction so that it is not abused by members, because right now, the way it's written, you can, anyone can abuse it at this point, and we need to have something that, that can, you know, make sure that that doesn't happen. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? I'd just like to add that, I don't, Shirley, what you're talking about, the CAE has three different versions of this policy that they offer boards to implement. So, I, I don't know where this comes from, but they're opposed to it. They, they are actually suggesting it.
CAE.
Yeah.
I, I have been.
And if you had come to the committee, you would have seen it.
Mike, I have been attending CAE for the last three years. If you attend some of those CAE committee meetings, that you might, and CAE convention, then you might understand what's going on. There's another one that's coming up soon, so why don't you sign up and go to that, and then you can sit there and ask that question to all those people at CAE.
Shirley, I don't need to. I have three versions of it right here, which I'm going to email you right now.
You can email me, whatever. During CAE, they said they don't recommend it. And I'll take the word of those people at CAE, then your documents, because the fact that it's not illegal, they can have it, but the fact that they do not recommend it, that's the difference, Mike.
Anything else?
Yeah. I plan to support the policy when it comes forward for a full vote, and I want to thank the Policy Committee for bringing us, bringing us into the 21st century, 16 years later. Thanks.
Anything else?
Is this open for noncommittee members?
Yeah, yeah. It's open discussion.
Committee members.
Yeah, it's open discussion.
All right. Actually, I'm a little surprised it's come back again, because I was on the committee back in 2014, when we thought it was not a good idea at the time, and we also, I think, agreed that we needed some more public input on it. I have several reservations against this policy, and I'd like to go through them briefly with everyone. I've been in the IT industry for over 25 years, and technology, as we all know, is not perfect. And so, my biggest red flag is technology issues. What happens when Wi-Fi goes down, or something happens as loose connection? Does that mean a meeting stops? Who provides support to the remote user? What if they are the fifth person, and when their stuff goes down, the meeting has to stop, because they make the forum? So, those are issues that I have first and foremost. Secondly, I know there's been a comparison to the Board of Estimate, that they have it. I think we're a little different. We are elected officials, we're not appointed. And so, with that being said, the electorate has put us here, and I believe they want to see our faces. They want to see how we vote, and sometimes we have to face the music with the public comments, and stuff like that. In addition, what's to say that we all just don't stay home one day? What are the safeguards, that none of us come to the meetings and we all just dial in remotely? And I, I absolutely think, and I agree with Ms. Mosby, that this is one of those policies that I believe the community should chime in on. They should have the say whether we can stay home, or we can log in remotely, because they're the ones who put us here in office, and they take the time to come here on Tuesday nights to the meetings, sign up, and they should have a say whether we can afford that luxury. I know we're not paid, I know we're a little different, you know, a lot of us do this voluntarily, but when we ran for office, we knew it was a four-year commitment, and we knew it was every other Tuesday, that we needed to be here. And also, I believe it's open for abuse. So, with that, those are my issues, why I don't believe it's a proper policy that should be, that I'm not going to support at this time.
Anything else?
Yeah, one more.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm also not in favor of it, particularly for the voting aspect. From my experience, when it comes down to voting, it has always been in person, not in terms of the board, but in other roles that I've held, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
I would note, I read in the policy, it requires a certain amount of quorum present in one physical location where the video media or whatever will be provided. I've also noted anecdotally from some of our correspondence with, amongst each other, that this would be used in rare circumstances.
Just included in intent, but.
Okay. All right. So, I didn't misunderstand that.
There, there was some discussion at that Policy Committee meeting about that, and there were, I think, some provisions in one of the CAE proposals, that, you know, you'd be limited to how many times you could use it, and, and we did discuss that, but I think at the end of the day, we just thought that, you know, we're all adults here, and to have little checklist rules, you can only do this many times, that many times, who's going to keep track of all that? That a, you know, I think, I'll have to double check with Heidi, but if, my recollection was, you know, we would defer to the board chair, that, you know, if it was getting abused, that, the board chair would say something to that number.
Nice. When we, when we voted against this in committee back in 2014, is this the same language as it was right then?
I don't believe so.
Which, which changed.
I don't, I don't remember now, because this was a month ago.
Yeah, can we find out? I'd like to see the difference.
Yeah, it wasn't, I don't, I don't think it was substantive. But I know Mike had proposed something, some changes, and I tried to find my file with all this, but I, I couldn't find it before tonight's meeting.
I mean, off the top of my head, it looks the same to me, but I don't.
I think it was more tweaks than substantive. But I do, I mean, I agree with Brian, I think this is part of joining the 21st century, and if you remember, when we were interviewing candidates for superintendent, we did that all online. We had a couple of operational problems, but all, all in all, it did work, and we did interview a lot of people.
But, you know, we've been, like I said, technology's not 100%, and we needed support. And who's going to support the user when, when they're home, or at their job, or wherever, when logging in, and they go down? Where's the support? There is none. So, that's some of the issues. And are we going to stop the meeting if, let's say it goes down here? We stop the meeting and then have IT support here fixing everything?
Yeah. And, and piggyback on all of that, is what effect does it have on the chairperson, who calls the meeting to order if that person's not there? Basically, you're here in the room so that you can see what's going on, and call on people, and if you have that remote, how is it going to be set up? All that IT stuff needs to be, you know, figured out before we, you know, step into something like that, because if you got a one-way where your face is here, but you can't see the entire room, and three people got their hands up, how are you going to, you know, know which one to call first or second if they have something to say? That's, you know, what the far as it is as the chair. And, and even though Tom Mooney in his November 14, 20, no, 2014 statement, I mean, journal to CAE, said that electronic participation to be second choice. There, there's no substitute for being physically present to see body language, and feel the mood in a room, and members can attend a meeting in person they should do. So, electronic participation results of host of policy issues, issues. Should the member attending the meeting remotely sit through the entire meeting? What do we do if the line is busy, busy, or the connection is lost? Exactly what Mr. Kisma said. How do we protect a security executive session? How do we know who else is in the room with the board member? It's hard to deal with every eventuality through policy, and it may be best simple to treat such participation as a procedural issue, on which the chairperson will ad hoc, depending on the circumstance. If the chairperson ruling is adverse, affect person may appeal as with any other point of order. And to some, Tom Mooney is saying it may be best, or at least for now, to deal with such situation as there arise, with the overriding principle being to encourage personal participation to allow remote participation, circumstances may warrant. That, that, and we need to have some restriction. Now, I understand, yes, the 21st century, and that's good, and that's where we're going, but we have to sit there and make sure we get the public to come in and weigh in on that, because as everyone know that, they're the ones that put us here. They're the ones that took the time, the one out, and voted for us to put us here, to see our face at, at this, this table. And if they decide that they don't want us here, then that's fine, that's on them. And we have to sit there, and some of us, we ran our campaign on what? Being here at this table for them. Now, if that's the case, then next time when we run, we put it in, in our little campaign manual that, hey, I want to sit there and do remote, and then you run on that. But right now, I feel that with just only, and my biggest concern is not that it's just only an hour and a half of working on this policy, that's it. And this is a major policy, whether you believe it or not, it's an hour and a half, and no community input is my biggest concern.
Anything else? Okay. Move on to the work session. This is going to be on curriculum development adoption and K-5 standards-based reporting system. Dr. Adamowski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lyons, and appreciate the board.
I'm sorry. So, I've made a request earlier to ask if you could come back to the Policy Committee, so I guess you're saying no, it's not going to come back.
Well, that's up to the, I mean, we're not going to.
I'm on the Policy Committee, that's why I'm asking.
That would be up to the Chair of the Policy Committee. If she schedules the meeting, then it will be.
Okay. So, now that means that I can go back to her and ask her, and then this could go back to the Policy Committee? I thought.
Yeah, and I think Mike had mentioned that he had talked to her, and she was looking at scheduling a meeting for the 15th to allow that.
Okay. So, okay, so it will not go to the next board meeting for a vote, then? It's going to go back to the Policy Committee, so we can address some of these concerns?
Well, it'll go to the Policy Committee first, correct.
Okay. And then after that, then that's fine. That's all I want to get clarification on that, to make sure that we can address some of these issues. Thank you.
So, I'm going to ask Dr. Connor and his two able associates to come up and review with you some landmark work that has occurred this summer in the fall. While they're doing that, I just, I want to point out the importance of this discussion to the board, because this really, in many ways, represents a shift for our future, from the board approving programs, to approving curriculum, with schools and teachers determining how to use materials to implement the curriculum for all children. You're, you, the board in the past has spent a considerable amount of time on approval of Tier One programs, and, you know, Journeys and Go Math are examples of that. But that is a Tier One program, it's not a curriculum. We should not think that we're following a standards-based curriculum simply by turning the pages of the book and, and following the, the program. If you look at the tiering in terms of student support nationally, the national average is about 70%, 60 to 70% of students have their needs met in a Tier One program. But there's another 20 to 30% that need extra help, that need something more, and those are the students that receive Tier Two support. Now, you know that that has been largely missing from our school system in the past. We're doing far better in that area now. That, we depend upon the resources of our state and federal grants for that, right? Which is why we cannot have local budgeted items in our state and federal grants, because this is essentially, it's the Alliance Grant, the Priority School District Grant, that essentially supports Tier Two. And then we have nationally, about 10%, 5 to 10% of students that near a Tier Three approach. And that by definition is additional time in whatever subject area it is, plus a specialist who is highly trained in helping the student to understand things in ways they have not understood before. Now, if you, if you look at this tiering in terms of our, our school system, at the, at last year at least, we don't, we don't have this year's data yet, you know, we had, we had about 50% of our students requiring Tier Two or Tier One intervention. As our reform gets traction, as these various curriculum innovations and school improvement measures take hold, we need to get to the national average of 70 in Tier One, 20 in Tier Two, 10 in Tier Three. And, you know, that, I think you're going to see us moving in that direction over the next couple of years. But the, the issue of a standards-based curriculum is fundamental to this, and you can't really make good Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three decisions without it. And this is really the job of the professionals in our schools and teachers, who have to make, who should have an array of materials and be able to make the judgment for this priority standard, given the needs of my students, I'm going to do this, I'm going to use this, this material. And it should not be rote following the textbook. So, this is a shift to get us to a higher level, a more sophisticated level, and I think the board's role, extremely important role in this, now shifts to the approval of curriculum. And we would like to, starting in, in December, be bringing you annually curriculum to approve that was developed and represents the best effort of our staff the previous summer. Now, this past summer, which is what you're, the focus of, of tonight, Dr. Connor held the first three curriculum institutes, which were world language, but most importantly, reading and math at the elementary level. We'll be moving to reading and math at the middle school level this next summer. And we had a tremendous set of dedicated curriculum developers, teachers in our, our schools, who, who did a fantastic job putting this together, but also grew themselves as practitioners, as a result of the process that they, they went through, and they're now in a position to help other teachers, and to be teacher leaders in this area. With that as introduction, I'm going to talk to Dr. Connor and have him pick up with the, with the products that were developed, and I believe this has been.
Yeah. It received unanimous of support with the Curriculum Committee, so job well done.
Good. Thank you. And good evening, Board of Education. Thank you, Dr. Adamowski. And this is my third project to engage in the rigorous curriculum design. I can tell you, Norwalk, little biased here, but Norwalk's curriculum artifact is, I would say, the best out of the three projects that I have been immersed in. And the documents in front of you, as you see, you have Common Core State Standards in legalized documents. And as you can see, it's a lot of dense language that's embedded within the standards. The, one misconception about the Common Core is that if it's implemented in isolation or as a standalone, we'll be able to reach College of Career Readiness Standards or indicators. However, we have to have this triangulation with content area curriculum that is standards-based, as well as our BUST Assessment Plan, our assessment system within the district. Last, excuse me, September, you have adopted our Assessment Plan. So, we really created and completed the triangulation process with our standards, develop a content area curriculum, as well as our BUST Assessment Plan, that we have integrated within Norwalk. Our goals are simple. We're going to have Janine, as well as Janine, Ms. Janine Goss, as well as Craig Crowell be able to unpack this for you. But there was three critical goals that we looked at. One, we wanted to ensure that our Tier One programs are systemically and systematically aligned to our standards-based curriculum, based off of the Common Core State Standards. Two is we want to create a vertical prioritizing of the standards, where we identify the learning trajectory key, very critical within content of Tier One instruction. Identifying those vertical learning priorities and trajectories, CAE through 12. We start the first phase, which was kindergarten through grade five, and within our second phase, it's going to be six through eight. And the third, which I think is very critical, is building leadership as well as teacher capacity. Craig, Craig Crowell, as well as Janine Goss, will go in depth in regards to how we built that teacher leadership or teacher capacity, as well as leadership capacity, and what we're doing to be able to address that. Our information, the, our core goal within this whole process was, we wanted this to be practitioner-driven. We wanted to be able to have teachers be a part of the design process, development process, as well as be able to institute this lateral peer-to-peer capacity building and support at every single school. Last April, this process started with Ms. Mary Yorden, as well as the NFT, where we looked at how we can be able to have a recruitment process to include all teachers or teachers that want to be a part of this process. We had an informational session, which was in May, well-attended, over 50 practitioners, pretty much heard the RCD process and what they will be engaging in. Janine Goss, as well as Mary Yorden, reviewed every single application roughly around the second week of May. Once the review application process was completed, we notified each practitioner of their acceptance, kind of like the approval to be a part of the RCD process, and that's where we shifted the mental model to become more in lines of curriculum designers. And then after the notification, we gave them a nice lunch, fed them really well, gave them their materials, their standards, and then the expectations started immediately that first week of June. And within June, this is where the Curriculum, Curriculum Institute, Institute started, where the orientation session consisted of prioritizing the standards, as well as looking at the Common Core Standards. Craig Crowell, as well as Janine Goss, is going to go through each phase process of the rigorous curriculum design process with that. However, within the Institute, we segregated each of the practitioners by content area, and there was vertical designation for each of the practitioners. So, we had one team that was K-2, a second team that was 3-5. We had roughly about 40 practitioners that participated in this process, so very inclusive, rigorous in the context of professional learning around the Common Core State Standards. So, it wasn't just a design process, it was more in lines of building capital and capacity around the standards. 20 days in total. Once the curriculum maps were designed, we looked at the maps, and we edited, wordsmithed them, so for final production. Key aspect of it was how we're going to build systematic capacity, systemic capacity with our leaders. We started at our August retreat, in the context of how are we able to unwrap the uh... We started at our August retreat, in the context of how are we able to unwrap the curriculum for the principals, as well as the CISSDs? And also, this is an ongoing process, it just doesn't stop in August. Our curriculum instruction site director meetings, as well as our afternoon sessions for, at our principals' meeting, is focused around how to be able to institute and implement and support teachers around this rigorous curriculum design or our new curriculum in ELA in math. Orientations to teachers occurred at the first two days, and it's ongoing. What we're doing now is executing or developing a strategy on how we can have the teacher leaders, our designers within the school, be able to lead professional learning communities, as well as being able to expand on professional learning in the context of implementation, modeling, specific practices, as well as having teachers going into, going into classes... Right, there's a halftime, right, intermission. Going into classes and being able to support teachers that wasn't a part of the design process. And what I'm really excited about is our Curriculum Council meeting, where our designers, on a voluntary basis, come back monthly, give us feedback on how the implementation process is going, how they're doing with the Authentic Performance Task, which Janine Goss and Craig Crowler is going to immerse in, and then also how we can refine the maps to really strengthen the implementation with it as well. And then, we made some on-time changes as well, you know, during the Curriculum Council process, and we're very happy that our teachers are participating in that as well. I'm going to have Craig Crowler, as well as Janine Goss, actually go into three phases of the RCD process. One is building the foundation, two is the actual design of the curriculum, and three is the development of it.
So when we first talk about the RCD process, the very first and most important step is absolutely to prioritize the standards. Just to give you an example, the package you have in front of you have about 35 standards, it's a third-grade sample. All 35 of those standards, if not equally important, there are about 13 that are the highest priority. For instance, in third grade, the most important thing is learning their math facts. They must leave third grade knowing 12 times 12. That's one of the most important things. So this step cannot be ignored, it is the foundation of our new curriculum. Prioritize, 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 focus, focus, focus. What you're going to see in a few minutes is, not only do we correctly prioritize the standards, but we've aligned them to the progress reports. So we're only grading and reporting out on the most important standards at each grade level, not all 35, about 13 out of 35 in third grade. It's interesting, because I used to teach this seminar about eight years ago before I came to Norwalk, and we used to talk about three things. What do kids need to learn to go from third grade to fourth grade? What do they need to do to pass that gosh darn state or national test? And then, what's important in math or ELA that they simply need to know for life, like estimation, or reading an article and getting the main idea? The process we followed in Norwalk is state-of-the-art. We've added a new component, and it really talks about leverage, is how do we leverage this to social studies and science? How do we have a true STEM environment, not just math and ELA, but make the connections to other disciplines? So, this is the lens, or lens is plural, through which we prioritize the standards. Some people, when they go through the RCD process, they just want to focus on what? The test. We're trying to give kids a background to make them ready for the next grade, ready for life, and make connections across all the disciplines. So it's not a singular focus, but it's sort of a multi-pointed lens. So, I'm going to turn it over to Janine, she's going to talk a little bit about how we pick those standards.
Okay, so, one of the things that Craig did not mention to you is that, once we did prioritize the standards, we fully unpacked them. And what we mean by that is, we looked at what concepts the kids needed to know, and what skills they needed to be able to do. We kind of liken it to this metaphor, if you look at the fence posts here, I know it's a little bit dark, but those fence posts go deep into the ground, that represents the deep learnings that kids need to know at their grade level. So that's kind of how we think of priority standards, that deep, deep learning. If we go to the next slide, we look at the supporting standards, and you look at these fence rails, those are the ones that are sort of those prerequisites, those building blocks kinds of standards that help support the priority standards. It doesn't mean, and anything that we're saying here tonight doesn't mean that all standards are not important, they absolutely are all important. It's just that through our curriculum map design, we emphasize different ones at different times of the year. So the second thing that we did, and this was fun, we had to name the units. So we looked across a series of lessons, and we had to decide on kind of a way to synthesize the focus through each of those lessons. And this was quite challenging. What we did was, we decided to go with skills-based units, rather than content-based units, thematic-based units, things like that. And what we wanted to do was make sure, so in ELA, for example, we wanted to make sure we were highlighting the literary elements that students would be engaged with, or the literacy skills that they would be using. So we named the units, and if you go to the next slide, here's an example, this is of grade three, understanding text elements, drawing conclusions, examining diverse genres, analyzing complex texts. This kind of shows you the way we were able to synthesize. And then, once we did this for each grade level, we posted these around the room, and we were able to see vertically, from K through five, how these units looked, to make sure that we were seeing common threads throughout K through five.
Okay, same thing in math, except that in math, you have certain skills and operations that have to be mastered at each grade level. So when you're going home tonight, you're in the elevator going down, and you're talking to Nancy or somebody else, this is your elevator speech. This is the fundamental difference between math and ELA. In ELA, you have sort of overarching standards that will carry through from kindergarten to fifth grade. Mathematics is a little bit different in the Common Core, there are certain things you have to master at each grade level, so this is a typical third-grade year. The year starts out in September with numbers and operations, and we end the year with geometry. So these are things that have to be mastered at third grade, because they're not going to be repeated in fourth or fifth grade. There's no more spiral. The Common Core is more like a stair-step. Here's second grade, here's third grade, here's fourth grade, this is what you have to master at each grade level. And you have a sample of this exact unit in your packet there as well. The next thing you have to do is, you have to really assign the standards. So when you look at an ELA example, a standard that's really important in kindergarten might be a little more important in first grade, a little less important in second grade, and then very important in the tested grades in three, four, five. This particular example has to be determining central ideas. So, kids aren't even really reading yet in kindergarten, so it's a supporting standard. But when you get to the higher grades, it's a priority in every grade level. So you see repetition of anchor standards are very important standards in ELA. In mathematics, it's just the opposite. Here's what you're supposed to learn in kindergarten, this is what you should be learning in first grade, subtraction in third grade, multiplication in fourth grade, and then fractions and division in fifth grade. So these are things that have to be mastered. If you don't master your math facts in third grade, you're going to have a very hard time with division in fifth grade. So this is the fundamental difference between math and ELA. Rather than anchor standards that carry through from grade to grade, there are certain topics that must be mastered, not only from year to year, but from September to June.
So then the next step was to take a look at our pacing calendar. We took a look at the units, and we sort of plotted them across the year. In ELA, we have six units, so we figured that we could probably take here two units per trimester, that's the way it lays out in ELA. And in math, it's a little bit different, there's between six and eight units depending on the grade level, so that timing might be a little bit different. And that fits nicely too for the progress reports. So we were able to absolutely identify which priority standards were going to be aligned with which trimester, and being reported out on the progress reports. So now, we're going to go through what you have in front of you, we're going to show you what we did with all of this really important information, and how we organized it for everyone. So if you take a look at your, you want to do math first? Let's do the math.
This is, there's an ELA and there's a math sample of a unit?
The third-grade packet?
Yes, for ELA.
So, what we did was, we only used grade three as an example or a model for you. Obviously, this is going to look fundamentally different for kindergarten through grade five.
So what you see here in your packet is exactly what's on the screen. This happens to be first grade, ELA, the topic is understanding text elements. We've given the teachers a six-week timeframe, and we've even penciled in exactly when it should take place, from September 6th to October 19th, give or take a day or two. This is a very robust, but clearly defined pacing calendar. And every map, whether it's first grade, second grade, third grade, all the way to fifth grade, ELA or math looks exactly the same. They all start with a grade level, the unit title, the pacing, and then we list the priority standards for that unit. In fact, we spent three days of editing, just to make sure that, not that these don't have type of graphical errors, but they all kind of hang together with the same font, they're easily understood, that no matter which one you turn to, you can quickly find the information you need, and you'll see that in your example right there in your packet. We also did something else that's really interesting, as you're flipping through the packet, what you're going to see is pages and pages of rubrics. We designed a performance task for nearly every single unit, and we're requiring teachers to do two complete performance tasks a year. This is where a student will take what they have learned and actually apply it to a real-world problem. And there is a method to our madness, we know that one of the greatest ways to achieve progress and close the achievement gap is to increase problem solving. So we're trying to infuse the curriculum with real-world problem solving in every unit. So when you see these authentic performance tasks, you'll know why we put them right in the curriculum. We are requiring teachers to do two complete performance tasks a year, and those performance tasks are keyed to the highest priority standards. We're not going to do a performance task on whisker plots in third grade, when the most important thing in third grade is multiplication. So the performance task will be centered around multiplication, and that's how we kind of get at two things.
Okay, so where do we get our evidence from? In ELA, we have so many things that we can choose from. We certainly make good use of our universal screenings and our progress monitoring tools through M-Class DIBELS. Those were the things that I spoke to you about when we talked about summer school, making sure kids can, you know, at the K in one level, segment phonemes, for example, hear those separate sounds and words, those measures are very critical. We also are going to be making very good use of our NWA math data in grades four and five in ELA. Oral responses, of course, written responses, the diagnostic assessments. I also mentioned to you previously that if students are showing a weakness, let's say, in one of these measures in M-Class, well then we use diagnostic assessments to dig deeper, to make sure we know what the root of the issue is, so that we can actually inform our instruction and plan for remediation. Teacher observations, of course, are so critical, ongoing, any anecdotal records that they make note of, they look for patterns in student responses, patterns in student behaviors. Common formative assessments, this is interesting, because if you take an idea, like the example that we saw for main idea, teachers can actually create a very short dipstick assessment that they can deliver maybe a couple of times throughout the year, to see how students are progressing toward mastery of the standard. So again, for example, main idea, there might be three paragraphs, and maybe they might ask students to identify the central idea and those informational pieces. And then you see how students do, and it informs your instruction, that's what a CFA is. We also will make good use, some of our students are on Lexia Core 5, I think you've heard about that adaptive technology, and that gives us an abundance of data, as well as the Authentic Performance Task, that we're not using necessarily as assessments, but it truly is evidence to show how students are progressing on those priority standards.
Janine, can I ask you?
Sure.
The M-Class, is that being used, what, one grades one, two, three?
It's K3.
K3.
It's K3. And there are different measures at each grade level.
But doesn't that, some of that give you some direction as to, I thought there were like in M-Class, there were five categories, and we kind of tell the teacher...
It does.
If the kid's weak here, or here.
So in September, Mike, if you remember, the M-Class DIBELS assessment really assessed the foundational skills that are embedded within the Common Core. Grades three, four, and five really assess and measure how students are doing in the context of the actual standards itself. So we're looking at both pieces of the ELA Common Core standards, but one assessment measures the foundational skills, the other assessment measures the standards itself.
And the Lexia Core 5, how's that distributed, or how, does it just happen in certain places?
Good question. So what we've done is, we have purchased Lexia Core 5 out of the curriculum's budget for about 15 percent of every school's population at the elementary level. We're also supporting middle schools as needed, and high schools as needed as well, so that they're really strategically identifying who really needs that support. Obviously, it would be nice if everybody had access, Lexia Core 5 could be good for everyone. But again, we're building our multi-tiered system of support, making sure we have certain Tier Two and Tier Three interventions in place for our neediest kids. And just to also go back to this, there are some measures, so let's say, in grades two and three, when students are reading grade-level text, and they're not processing text at an efficient enough rate, that might not be the issue, it might not be fluency. So in some cases, the skills are not discrete enough to be able to identify that that's the issue. So when I talked about diagnostic assessments, it really helps to piggyback on the data that teachers gain, when they look at that DORF, that DIBELS oral reading fluency measure, for example. The diagnostic assessments are critical.
And also, Mike, Lexia Core 5 was integrated into our Norwalk Summer Academy as a Tier Three intervention form, right? So it's really looking at the students that really need that discrete skill support, and that's just a...
This is digressive, but based on the numbers, are the kids who went to summer school just kids on Tier Three intervention, or were there just Tier Two kids?
There were also Tier Two, and we also invited some students, if we had room, we invited other students as well.
So it was a true implementation of our multi-tiered system of support. Tier One instruction coupled with Tier Two intervention, Tier Three support, but an Authentic Performance Task, so the skills can be actually demonstrated in a real-world context.
In mathematics, the list looks very much the same, but it's not. Visually, it looks the same, but if you actually look at the difference, the evidence is quite different in ELA in mathematics. Now, these lists are comprehensive, but not exhaustive, but actually quite exciting for the teachers. When you think about what a teacher had in their bag of tricks just three, four, or five years ago, they had a book and maybe a paper pencil test. We're now arming them with the greatest pieces of computer adaptive technology that we can muster. Many of these things have already shown dramatic increases in closing this student achievement gap. One thing in particular, this personal math trainer adapts to every single student. Last year, Dr. Adamowski mandated that students have an extra half hour of mathematics in November. Half the schools start in November, the other half started in January or February. The schools that started earlier with the computer adaptive technology had a two-to-three-point differential on the S-Back test. Now, I can't with causation say that PMT caused the increase, but there was a definite correlation between the schools that got 2,000 extra minutes of personalized instruction versus significantly higher S-Back scores. What these types of programs do is, they take our NWA reports, and they populate them into a personalized learning plan. So if we were all on PMT, you could be getting fractions, Dr. Connor could be getting math facts, Jeanie could be doing subtraction regrouping, Arnie could be getting fractions with unlike denominators, they're that specific. And as the year goes on, they get better and better, because it keeps an electronic dossier on every student, and it keeps zeroing in on every child's individual weakness. So we've had some tremendous success with these already. Some things that are the same, though, between math and ELA, are CFAs, we still expect teachers to give short dipsticks along the way to gauge student learning. We're both using performance tasks in ELA and math, and we use a lot of adaptive technology, Times It Tech, Compass Learning, MyPAP, Personal Math Trainer, Sword of Success, all these things are working for us. And it's, it's a blessing that we have the extra time now in mathematics to put them into effect. Okay, I'm going to ask you to indulge me just a little bit, for two minutes, I'm going to give you a little website walk. All of these curricular documents that you have in front of you are available on our website 24 hours a day, and we're populating them constantly. We also meet monthly with the curriculum teams, we met last Thursday, we're supposed to meet for 90 minutes, we met for two hours and 40 minutes. And nobody had to stay, you know, in the 90 minutes, but the teachers are quite enthusiastic about the new curriculum.
Craig, I just haven't, I don't know if you're going to talk about this later, but I was really impressed when I learned about what, the work that was done over the summer, and what all these teachers did. So I don't know if you're going to be going into that, how they did work on all this, I think they were paid, but...
Yeah, they were, they were paid.
They volunteered at the same time, and they gave up the summer to work on this.
I don't think they knew what they were volunteering for, to be honest with you. No, it's, it was an intentional process, you know? Not only did they produce an artifact, they were also to gain valuable knowledge around the Common Core State Standards, because if one was to look at this just from a cursory observation, these are very intimidating documents. It takes time to really understand, in both conceptually and in a practical manner. So, each design session was strategically mapped out, sequenced to how we're going to unwrap the standards, first being able to build background knowledge around the standards. And I can assure you that all of our 35 or 40 practitioners that participated in this process know the standards inside and out. This is, like I said, my third iteration of going through the RCD process, and just the intensity, the totality of participation, as well as the knowledge that we've gained from our practitioners, this is going to help us really create a true teacher leadership model, as well as a distributed leadership model as well. So it's not just coming from administration or bureaucratic approach, but it's more in the lines of teachers leading teachers around this. And that peer-to-peer coaching, especially with the buy-in with the new curriculum, our, our designers did a very good job. And it was intense, 20 days, at ponus, it was all, like I said, marked up with... It was all, like I said, marked up with a chart paper, prioritizing the standards, having great discourse about what should be a priority standard versus what should be a supporting standard, as well as the unwrapping process for big ideas and the development of the central questions. So, in essence, they went through what I call Common Core Boot Camp, but the artifact speaks for itself.
So, roughly, there were 4 teachers from each school?
Uh, no, it varies. It varies. I can give you the roster.
Okay. Right, right. Just curious.
Yeah, 35 to 40 teachers, 20 hard days. Some of the quality of the work was superior. We had national trainers, and they said that some of the work we did in 1st grade math and 4th grade ELA, really national quality, especially on our authentic performance test. And they do this for a living across 50 states, and some of the work we put out was some of the best they've seen so far. We're really proud of the teachers. They did a great job. This is our new curriculum website. I happen to be on MAP, and I'm going to show you ELA as well. At every single MAP, you have one example in front of you. 3rd grade is laid out for the teachers, and we do the same thing for English Language Arts. Every single grade, 6 units per grade, all the way up through 5th grade. And believe it or not, we're starting to populate ELL as well. So, soon we'll have ELL done. We've already created the Tupperware container, and we're starting to populate the ELL units as well. So, this will be the new repository for all of our curriculum. And the beautiful part about having it live on our website is Jeanie, myself, Dr. Connor, the teachers, we can go in at each curriculum council and edit the documents. So, anything from a typo to helpful hints for the teachers, we can type right into the documents live, and it's instantly fixed. So, we're quite, quite proud of that. I just want to show you one thing before we leave this page. If you take the unit that's in your pack, it happens to be Grade 3, Unit 1, I listened carefully to what Dr. Adamowski said at the beginning of the presentation. We are no longer wed to a textbook. This is a robust curriculum that stands on its own based on the highest priority standards. This particular document is 21 pages long. If we were to pick a new math book, we would only change one paragraph of one page of the 21 pages. And I'll show you where that is. That's how strong the curriculum is. So, this unit has 2 priority standards, NBT 2 and NBT 3. And if we were to scroll down to the end, it tells you exactly where to find those standards in our resource, which happens to be going to MAP. But if we were to change the book, we would only change this one box. We would just pick a different resource and align it to that, but it wouldn't change the other 20 and 1/2 pages of the 21 pages. So, we're no longer wed to the curriculum or to the textbook, but to the highest priority standards. The textbook's just a resource.
So, now we can be very intentional on how we identify programs, because the programs have to align to our curriculum, not we have to align to the program itself.
And what we're continuing to do too is rely on the teachers' expertise as they go through the year and go through the units. When there are supplemental materials, we can post them, so that everybody can benefit.
Any questions?
I'd just say my, I was a little surprised when my 2nd grader had algebra homework. You know, it was just commutative property of addition, but it's cool. She's like, she's doing algebra. She's into it, you know?
All roads lead to algebra.
And we're, all roads lead to, all roads lead to algebra. It begins early on.
I don't think I had algebra until 9th grade. You're like, in 2nd grade, like, it's cool. I mean, we were having it, but they just never called it that, right? So, I think it's empowering, so. Good job, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Well, it's also, it's really good to see that we're not going to be going forward curriculum, forcing our system to match textbooks. You know, it's sort of like the way, sometimes you can force your systems to match whatever computer program you happen to have purchased instead of the other way around. You know, the program determines what you want to do, not the textbook or the software. This is really positive. Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you to everyone that gave up their time and worked hard on this, and concede progress. Thank you, Dr. Adamowski, for, you know, for moving to the next level. And I just want to encourage you guys to keep moving forward, because, you know, our children really need it. So, thank you again.
Well?
I'm on the curriculum committee, so I already reviewed this with you at discussions. I just want to let everybody know how much of a huge, huge, huge task this was. It's curriculum, and you're only 3 individuals doing this. So, just keep it up, and I know it's a lot of work, but I do have a question, though. When it comes to 6, 7, and 8, and as you move into the high school, how are you going to incorporate science and social studies? Is someone else going to come on board as a specialist for those areas?
Right. So, our social studies, 6 through 8, has already went through that process this summer. Science is year 3 within the Strategic Operating Plan. So, our goal ultimately is to develop K through 5 this year, 6 through 8, which will start with the Curriculum Institute for Summer 2017, and then science for Summer of 2018. Now, there's some flux around the next generation of science standards adoption, so we're still waiting to see if, how that plays out nationally with the NGSS. So, that's why we pushed it to year 3. There's a national recommendation that we should not start science immediately. We should wait at least 2 years to see what the implementation, what the national rollout, and also what the state rollout is going to be around science. So, that's why we purposely or intentionally put that 2 years, but yes, we're going to follow that sequence.
Okay. Thank you.
What about, Jeanie, you and I talked about this the other day, what about, you know, if you're doing this work in middle school, what about kind of the curriculum and textbooks? How's that all get coordinated? Because maybe a lot of the materials, printed materials we have aren't really what we want to be using. We don't have the funds for that necessarily, or are you going to come with a request? Or what's, how does that turn out?
A request, Mike. A huge request.
So, we did make a swap this year, actually. Pearson's been very good to us. The anthologies that they currently have in their possession were not really meeting the needs of students, and so we recognized that, the teachers recognized that, brought that to our attention. And Pearson has given us a brand-new set of materials at no cost.
Nice one.
And we're piloting it. So, a lot of our professional learning opportunities have been around what's called my perspectives. And there's opportunities in this model for whole group teaching, small group differentiated teaching, as well as a blended learning model and independent work. So, teachers are receiving that professional learning from the summer, as well as November 8 and ongoing. So, all we really need to do when we rewrite the curriculum is realign resources. So, we will make use of that as a primary resource, but we do have lots of access to digital resources as well, and we have to continue to build that repertoire, so that we're not just using one resource.
So, you know, I appreciate this issue we raised, because this is a, this is a very key consideration in our work in middle school redesign. I think that a good deal of the low performance that we have seen at the middle school is due to the fact that we have not had a standards-based curriculum to follow. And so, some of the standards are missed, others are not addressed at all, others are not addressed at the same, at the level of priority that's needed. If there's anywhere that we need a curriculum, it's at the middle school level. And then, you're right, we're, then we move into a process of development of teachers, right, to be able to teach those standards and materials that will support the standards that they can use. I think if we knew what we know now about middle schools, when we started our Strategic Operating Plan last year, we might have started with the middle school, right? 6 through 8.
You mean this, this?
Curriculum, right. But again, the good news is, and you know, there's a limitation to this, because these are, this is an expensive undertaking, having a curriculum institute and employing, you know, 40 people for 20 days to do this work. And so, we can only do a couple of them each year. We only have almost, we only have so much capacity in terms of Dr. Connor and Jeanie and Craig to do this as well. But we're really looking forward to the middle school work this summer. It's very much needed, and it's going to be very, a very big element and component in the improvement of achievement in our middle school.
Can you just talk a little bit about how it all ties in? Like, I guess it's kind of a chicken or an egg, especially in ELA, because you're like, okay, we've got these standards, which we're going to refine, I guess you could say. We've got these curriculum materials. You know, it's kind of, you do the standards, and you say, okay, this is how this curriculum's going to fit in, and this is the, these are the materials we have, and we're going to fit.
Right. We go through the exact same process that we went with elementary, and the good news is that you do start with elementary, because you need to see that vertical alignment. That's the advice that we've been given, to start at the K level, K-5, and then make sure that we continue with that same process through middle and high school.
So, Mike, for understanding purposes, K-5 priority standards have already been outlined and created and implemented into the actual MAP. When we start the 6 to 8 design process, we're actually going to take the kindergarten through grade 5 priority standards and start building, as Craig referenced in a staircase manner, start building on the 5th grade standards to now create the 6 through 8 priority standards. Ultimately, in English Language Arts and math, we want to be able to have the Common Core State Standards vertically prioritized and aligned in a K through 12 sequence. So, the 12th grade teachers know what the kindergarten teacher priority standards are. 5th grade teachers know what 6th grade priorities are. 7th grade ELA teachers know what the 6th and 5th grade priority standards are. So, they'll be able to address it in a systematic manner through Tier 1, Tier 2, or Tier 3. We can also identify what are some of the key gaps, i.e. the supporting standards that students need to master in order to reach that level of mastery with the priority standards. So, is that K-12 sequence kind of goes back to the goal of how we can identify the vertical learning priorities based off of the priority standards?
What happens, so let's say you have a kid in 4th grade, he does not meet all the standards, be it in math or in English. So, you're like, okay, child gets Tier 2, needed to Tier 3 intervention, school year ends, kid's still not there, send the kid to summer school. Then what happens, you know, is he put in 5th grade, even though maybe not all the standards are fully met, or what happens to it?
We have to continue to scaffold. We have to continue to differentiate, and not all kids will get them. That's just the reality. You know, it would be nice, after you teach a unit of study, that students would master the standards that you set as priorities, but that doesn't always happen. Some need more repetition, some need further exposure, and it's our job as teachers to make sure that we figure out what the best way to do that is, and that would be through Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions as well. And if it really doesn't work, and we have documentation that we've tried everything we can, then we need to probably go to a pre-about and see if there are any other issues that are impeding the student's progress.
So, this is a really good question, right? I mean, it's a question that every educator struggles with relative to how do you close the gap for all children? Another way to answer it is to say that if we have a standards-based curriculum and effective Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 approaches, the number of students on that pyramid who are not achieving the standards gets narrower and narrower. And in an ideal system, or at least the one we're striving to create, that point of the pyramid should be less than 1% of the students, okay? Now, based upon our data, it's more like 20%, and if you include the Tier 2 students, it's more like 50% or half of our school system. But done effectively and supported by a tier, by a standards-based curriculum, we should be at the 1% level. Now, that happens as, at least theoretically, to be those students who should be referred to special education, right? And you can certainly argue that a good deal of our students have been referred into special education due to the absence of Tier 2 and Tier 3 approaches in SRBI. So, this is a critical question, and it ties in the special ed issue, because we shouldn't have that many children in special ed, particularly not that many children with reading issues. You know, you realize that in our system, and this is reflective nationally, 60% of all students in the LD category, which is the largest category, have reading problems, okay? So, if you had a better tiered system of instruction around standards, you wouldn't have that many children being placed in special ed for reading. This is the issue of over identification. But if you're, if you're a teacher sitting there, and that's, and that's all you have to rely on, that's all your district is giving you, right? Of course, you want help for that children, and you're going to make the referral to special ed. So, again, this is an integrated part of our rising to the next level.
This is a digression. It's not really connected to the presentation, but we opened the topic up, so I'm going to ask, because we really haven't discussed this. There's some crazy number, I forget what the percentage of, where you're talking about the reading issues that these students have, and the percent of kids in special ed who are actually dyslexic, don't get invited, they don't get identified any timeframe that they should be. And recently, someone I know who's a very long-term teacher here, one of her kids was diagnosed in 7th grade as a dyslexic child, which you would think if anybody would have figured it out earlier, would be a parent who was a teacher herself. So, are we doing, can we do more on that front? Because it sounds like that is such a huge area that needs, and a lot of the special ed parents I know, a former board member, 2 of her 3 kids were dyslexic. I mean, I know it's a big issue, and I don't get the feeling we really have any resources devoted to identifying.
So, if you go into the second year of our special ed development plan and the SOP, you'll see mention of the development of a dyslexia clinic, okay? Now, the reason why no one is identified is because none of our psychologists have assessments that identify dyslexia. Currently, if you're a parent, you have to get an outside evaluation for dyslexia. Then you bring it back to the school system and fight with us to pay for it, right? I mean, that's basically the process that goes on. And then, because we don't offer a treatment for dyslexia, now you're into the realm of seeking an outside placement, okay? It's difficult to tell the exact percentage, but we have enough anecdotal evidence, as you've mentioned, Mike, to think that it's quite large. And so, we've had discussions that started, you know, with Fairfield University regarding a summer clinic, and then, you know, Dr. Topper and I have talked about, okay, how do we take steps to create a permanent regional clinic within the school district? One of the interesting things about dyslexia is this has like everything to do with assessment. So, you need a clinician in that clinic who can actually diagnose dyslexia. This is a very high level of training, and there are very specialized assessments for it, right? But they are not all paper and pencil assessments. It requires observation of the student, certain exercises you do with the student, and so on. It's a very, it's a very high level sophistication. Following that, you know, dyslexia, when you treat dyslexia, it is a, you don't change it. This is a matter of compensating for dyslexia by developing other strategies and other strengths, right? And typically, I'm told by experts that this is about a 6 to 12-week process, depending upon the students, the student. So, this is not a situation where you stay in a clinic for several years. You're in there for a couple of months until you develop these compensatory skills, and then, then you are, you know, fully in the mainstream. You're coming back to the clinic occasionally, right, to be reassessed, to get, you know, perhaps more skills and so on. But it's a dynamic situation. Again, it's something we've never done. It's outside of our special ed box at the current time, but it's something I think that's very compelling for us to get involved in in the future.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
All right. Part 2. This component, very excited about, because we had 10 practitioners, as well as stakeholders representing NASA, as well as NFT, that was involved in this process. We wanted to ensure that there was systemic alignment and coherence between our curriculum maps, as well as the standards, whether it be Common Core State Standards or other national standards, to be able to coincide with our standards-based reporting system. And Craig, if you can hit that. There were 3 major goals as we defined this vision of what alignment and coherence is. One, ensuring that the reporting structure, and Jean Starfman, thank you for being here, will be able to review with you the infrastructure of how we align the actual progress reporting system to the standards language. Two was, again, the alignment of the curriculum maps, as well as other content areas, scolding sequence within the actual progress report. And the third piece, in which Ms. Goss is... Two was, again, the alignment of the curriculum maps as well as other content areas, scope and sequence within the actual progress report. And the third piece, in which Ms. Goss, as well as Ms. Crowler, had went over extensively in regards to using the specific measures from the curriculum maps to be able to identify a rating system or a rating for each student based off of the trimester. Our process started in December of 2015, and has went all the way up to September of 2016. We made our presentation to the curriculum committee in September, as well as Mary Yordan and her cabinet members made the presentation to the NFT council as well as the stewards in September 2016. Just the past, within the past two weeks, we made the presentation of the reporting system to our principals as well as our curriculum instruction site directors. And then, we're hopefully getting ready to have our dissemination of the progress reports as well as the supporting documents, i.e. our teacher handbook as well as the parent handbook that we developed to be able to support parents to understand the standards. When we got community feedback as well as parent feedback, a lot of parents said they did not understand the educational jargon that was embedded in the old standards-based reporting system. So what we did was to complement that. We developed a parent handbook where it's pretty standard information, as well as standard language, I should say, in regards to looking at the standards and how the standards are in layman's language. And then in January of 2017, this committee is planning to reconvene to be able to look at the feedback that we collected from the December progress reports, as well as parent feedback, teacher feedback, and what we can do to continue to enhance this process. I'm gonna have Mr. Jean Starkman go over the actual progress reports with you and the difference from the 15, 16 academic year to the new standards-based reporting process in 16 and 17.
So for our previous years, we had a three-page report card, approximately 80 items for somebody to grade and parents to have to go through. It was pretty laborious for a parent, me being one of them. And we, I guess, we used to have a one-page report card, but the standards were not aligned to what they were really teaching. So what they came up with was pretty similar. They had the same topics, the language arts and everything. But the components within each subject area are aligned with what Janine and Craig have put in for the teachers as well as the parents. The standards are very plain, simple, easy read, and they're very conferenceable. The purpose of these report cards are so that they can be presented to the parents at the time of conference along with the packet so that the parents can see what standards are being assessed and how they're being assessed and what the number grade means. And then they can just pretty much talk about the whole child as opposed to what this standard means, what this standard means, what this standard means. And it gives the idea of what the child is as a whole instead of just each subject area. So pretty much each report card for every grade is pretty similar in the text. It's just whatever the content area that's being covered is going to be discussed at conference time. I think that's pretty much it. We also have the report card in Spanish, and so that, you know, that's as we've already had before.
So Jeanie's being very modest, we owe her a debt of gratitude. You can see we've literally gone from three pages down to one page, and you have the one-page copies, which are fully available in English and Spanish. So it's quite a Herculean task, statement that we owe Jeanie a debt of gratitude for putting up with us. We had 11 previous versions, and then two or three more are coming down the turnpike to squeeze it into one page, but it is manageable, easily understood. And you have copies of both the teacher and parent guide in your packets, which Jeanie will be talking about.
Can I ask one question? The report cards, when will this be effective? Are these already effective this school year?
December.
So December will be the first time.
First time, yeah.
I know the previous version, we got constant complaints from people.
Bonbari was with parent feedback.
Don't you remember the whole score thing?
Yeah.
You couldn't get a good grade. Until you hit the standard weight of the year.
This is a happy medium, yeah.
We hope so. And one other thing that we should mention is if, if we look at those curriculum maps and we change the priority of the standards, it will not affect the progress reports. So that's the beauty of the progress reports. It will change the handbooks that I will share with you now. It will not change the progress reports. So parents will get used to the same format.
So the only thing that changes are the standards. But the outline or the infrastructure of the actual progress report itself highlights the domains. There's critical domains in both ELA and math as well as for science and social studies. So only the domains are highlighted within the report cards or the progress report. But as you can see, within each trimester, the standards, the priority standards will change.
So I want to walk you through the teacher handbook now and then the parent handbook, just so I can familiarize you with the content. So go to the teacher handbook.
Sure. Power School, are you gonna have that now for, is that, are they gonna put the report cards so that elementary school parents will be, elementary school parents either aren't using Power School or there's not much there for them?
The parent portal?
Yeah.
We can, yeah, we can have it available for the parents. As of right now, the only thing they'd see on the parent portal would be attendance. But once the, once this is in place.
They would just see the progress of the report cards.
But they, those will be, so I mean, elementary school parents will be encouraged to use Power School?
Yes.
Will they still get a printed?
Yes, so we would have to go through the process announcing it, but the system's set up to be able to use Power School. We just have to throw them a paralog into the elementary school.
Do you want to do that? I mean, is that?
I, I mean, there's.
Possible.
There's no reason why not to. It just would take, like I said, we just have to make sure we put out the information in a way that makes sense for the parents. But it's, it's a pretty straightforward process. It's the same process. We use it with secondary school parents by sending out the information, you know, via their email. They get a secure password to get in.
Right. But at this point, the plan is for these progress reports to be sent out.
They'll also be, they'll be printed throughout this year. They will definitely be printed when we send them.
Do they still do, I mean, when I would go in for these with my kids when they were little, they, you know, it was like a tear-off, you know, where they kept one, they gave one to you. What are we doing now?
They probably will have a copy for you to sign as well as they would.
When you have your teacher conference.
And they'll give you a copy too as a parent.
Okay.
Mike, to answer your question, they're already on Power School.
For you and for the elementary?
Yes, and when the parent comes to the conference, they'll be given the parent handbook and the hard copy of the report card as well. Those, of course, who don't show up will mail it out. These have actually already been printed and distributed to the schools.
Okay, so the teacher handbook. So in an effort to create consistency across all our schools and minimize the inconsistent grading from school to school and even teacher to teacher, we have these teacher handbooks, which I think teachers are very, very excited about. So if you take a look at the very first few pages, there is an explanation of standards-based grading. This way, it puts everyone on the same page, literally. What do those scales mean in terms of a one, two, three, or four? When you look at the ELA section, you'll notice that we've included the anchor standards. And the reason why these are very important is because you'll notice, see the phrase, key ideas and details, craft and structure, integration of knowledge and ideas. That's what appears exactly in that order on the progress report. So we needed to make sure that when we refer to key ideas and details, teachers and parents will know exactly what standards are aligned with that subheading or that domain. So that's why when I said that if the priority standards change, because we change our curriculum documents based on what we're seeing our kids do, it's not going to change the progress report itself. It will change the teacher handbook, okay? So you'll notice those. We also included the anchor standards for writing. There are 10 of them. In speaking and listening, there are six anchor standards, as well as for language, there are six. And then classroom teachers, and what you have in front of you, these long documents have the great specific standards that are aligned with those anchor standards. That's how the Common Core is arranged, okay? What was really nice that we did, if you take a look at the next page and you look at the four-column chart, was we included that domain or that subheading. So again, key ideas and details. We listed the priority standards for that trimester. So teachers know exactly which standards are being rated for that trimester. We mentioned the long-term targets, which is just, it breaks down that standard language into more friendly language for everyone, for teachers, for students, for parents. And then for ELA, I also added examples of evidence because these standards are very difficult to understand, even for me, you know? And we needed to have a lot of discussion with our colleagues about what those standards actually mean in terms of student work. And if students are demonstrating progress towards those standards, well, I wanted to create some sort of scenario that would explain to teachers what exactly they might look for. So that's what that fourth column does. In math, very, very similar. If you continue to go through here for math, there is that introduction. Do you want to take over from there? Am I doing okay? There's that introduction, okay? And then you have those four columns as well.
The four columns is important because the standards are often written in a way that parents and even some teachers sometimes can't understand. So think of the long-term targets as layman's terms. What does it really mean for operations on addition three using multiplication and division within 1,000? It means I can solve multiplication and division problems with three and four-digit numbers. So that's what it really means. So we've broken that down so it's easy to understand. And then we tell teachers in the evidence column where to gather the data to give a legitimate grade. So there's no mystery about how you're gonna grade that standard. And the only standards that are listed are the only ones that will appear on the report card. So there might be 13 standards taught that marking period. But if you notice for grade three semester one, there's only four that appear on the report card. Those are the highest priority standards, back to step one of the rigorous curriculum design project. So there really is a one-to-one correspondence between the new progress reports, the curriculum, and these guides. They're in sync, all three pieces.
So Jean, Craig, and Janine are gonna laugh at me when I say this, but, because I always use this in reference. It's about alignment and coherence for systems. Alignment and coherence.
You said it a few times, right?
That means we're all on the same page. We also included the standards for science. And like Dr. Connor said before, we really moved into the next generation science standards. These are the ones that teachers are used to, and we do have scope and sequence for those. So that's the teacher handbook. This will change two more times. And so Craig and I have to create the next one pretty soon so that teachers will have that in their hands as soon as we can get it to them.
You mean for March and then June, finally, okay.
Because the priority standards change.
But what doesn't change, if you look at the parent guide, it has some of the same information in here, but this is good all year. Again, it starts with an explanation of what standards-based grading is and what those scores actually mean. We included the anchor standards. And then what we did was we included all the standards in their target language. So if parents look at the progress report and they see key ideas and details, they'll know from looking at that page, for example, what standards are included under that domain or that subheading. And then they can look at the standards language and see the long-term target friendly language. So we thought that would be very helpful for parents. We will provide these to parents at conference time along with a hard copy of the progress report. If parents do not get to make the conference, we will be sure to make sure that these get sent home along with the progress reports. Just the timeline.
Will I do the timeline? So last slide. We worked hard to organize this with the help of the curriculum subcommittee, who gave us the permission to move forward. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. And all of this hard work really brings us to tonight. We'd like to move forward with a coherent, three-pronged, systematic curriculum assessment and support for the teachers. Let's see, questions?
I just want to say fantastic work. I went through this firsthand last year with the three. I thought it was four-page report.
Three and a quarter.
All the parents in Cranberry knowing I'm on the board asking me what the hell we're doing. I think the hardest thing for them, the stomach, was how's my kid at two? How's my kid possibly at two? I think they got it as the year went on, that they're marching towards it. Even if they're two at year end, it's okay. Hopefully they're three or even four. And I think they were able to digest that. But this is gonna be a whole lot more palatable, one-page. And they may never read this, but they're definitely gonna get this on one page. And I think that's, that's good work. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Con?
You know, I think this illustrates what a difficult, sophisticated, and important job our teachers have, right? This is not easy stuff, right? I can reflect back to when I was a teacher, right? We have to deal with any of this. And so in a standards-based system now, particularly with the Common Core, given a robust curriculum, given the kinds of measures that we have, accountability, our knowledge of the achievement gap, and the desire to close it, it also illustrates, you know, the support that our teachers need, the role of the district in providing this kind of a system, but also providing professional development and encouragement and support and professional learning to get to this much higher level than we have never been at before as an education system. Tough work, and our thanks and congratulations for everyone who is contributing to it and doing it.
Artie and Shirley?
Yeah. I know in the timeline it says that we'd like to get approval of this meeting. I don't know if we can bump it up or not, because we have to get this out for December.
We can do it at the December workshop or your business meeting. I mean, we're sensing that the board is on board with this, so.
Well, yeah, normally, normally the December 6 would just be a work session. But we have put business items on the first meeting agenda.
And the only reason we're gonna be able is because we gladly canceled our last meeting for Mr. Facilities over here.
Well, he had a few. He had a few little things on the.
Small problems, so.
Well, I think, I think we can all agree that we can, we can put this on the December.
Even the non-fish will go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody has any objection. We can, I mean, if anybody has an objection, let me know. But I think you can take, clearly the board is supportive of this. We'll give you a formal vote at December 6 so we cross the Ts and dot the Is. But I think we're very supportive of this. I mean, this is a tremendous amount of work in a relatively short period of time. And it seems to have really closed some gaps, you know? We spent a lot of time, last couple of years, spending a couple of million dollars on, you know, getting textbooks, software, et cetera. And so hopefully that's still usable. Absolutely, because there's a lot of money to do it. But this overarching organization here, I think, is what really makes those tools valuable. So really good work, and I thank the curriculum committee for working on this. All right, so we'll put this on for a formal vote on December 6. But the consensus I think you can take is there's nobody here who doesn't admire what you've done.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Oh, yes, and then Shirley, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was gonna ask, when, when the parents are given this progress report and the handbook, is there someone that can kind of like briefly go over this with them so that, because you know, there might be some parents that want a more in-depth, you know, explanation on how to put the two together? Or is there gonna be like a meeting or something?
We hope at the parent conference that the teacher will be able to use the handbook as well as the progress report in a very transparent manner. So, you know, when they're explaining the priority standards, they'll be able to have the parent, as an example, reference, you know, this, and here's the long-term targets, and here's how we're measuring your child on this standard. And at home, you can be able to support them by using the language that's parent-friendly.
And that type of sharing the evidence with them.
Absolutely.
So that's good, that way it'll cut down on the questions when they leave, you know, so that'll be good.
Yeah, I think the opportunity to face-to-face talk about this stuff to the parents is a perfect way to roll it out. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Jean?
All right, next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have a signing sheet somewhere? Stiff! You want to do the honors since?
Mr. Secretary.
Oh, that's right, he's the secretary. All right, Mr. Marvis, public comments.
Yes, we have, I guess our first speaker is Steve Colarossi.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Steve Colarossi. I live in 27 Plymouth Avenue in Norwalk.
I live in 27 Plymouth Avenue in New Orleans. And yes, I am here to speak about the same topic that I spoke to all of you in the late spring, which is the Brookside preschool program. Now, I understand, the administration decided that's not necessarily a program that they want to continue. But I raised a number of serious questions and questions that I had been promised we would get answers to. Now, I don't care that, you know, my friends and my former colleagues may have made a promise that they couldn't, you know, follow through on, which was that the information would be forthcoming, you know, at a finance committee meeting or at a board meeting. But there are still some very serious concerns that do need to be addressed. First and foremost, under state office of early childhood regulations, a preschool program which is not operated by a public school district in a public school building must be licensed. The programs at Naromat and Tracy Fox Run are not licensed. And if they were programs operated by the public school system, then we wouldn't need a contract paying Steppingstone and Literacy Howe a considerable sum of money. So clearly, they're not programs which are being administered by the public school district. Therefore, they must be licensed. Secondly, I had raised concerns that with respect to how the payments are being processed, I reviewed a tremendous amount of purchase orders showing that payments are being made or were made last year to Steppingstone from a variety of accounts, from the teacher's salary account, from the equipment and materials account. That's wrong. Yet, in our budget, there is no accounting whatsoever for the more than $4 million which is taken in, in the school readiness grant money. Under the contract, those funds are supposed to be what's used to pay Steppingstone. Yet, based upon the purchase orders, and I believe I emailed most of you copies of them, you'll see that payments are being made from various accounts, accounts which should have no relationship whatsoever to the operation of a preschool account. It's wrong, it's not fair to the taxpayers, and it's certainly not fair to the students who are being penalized. And that brings me to my next point. Now, teachers work hard, and admittedly, circumstances happen in which teachers have to put in an extra effort. I understand that, I get it. And this isn't about my wife necessarily having to work hard, but since March, her classroom has not had a full complement of two paraprofessionals, which are required by the program guidelines. In September, another, the second paraprofessional resigned to take a better position. So since March, the students in my wife's classroom, Room A13 at Brookside School, have been denied consistent educational support from paraprofessionals. It's wrong, it shouldn't be tolerated, and I would ask you to recognize that the Brookside program was recertified by N A U Y C. There's been no mention whatsoever by the board commending the staff of that recertification. I think it speaks to not just the lack of support for the staff, but more importantly, and what's frightening to me, it's a lack of support for the students, our most vulnerable and youngest students in the Brookside program. They deserve better. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marvis.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I believe our next speaker is John Moser.
Good afternoon, board. My name is John Moser, 15th House and Avenue. I haven't been to, I missed a few of my board meetings, but I come out tonight just to be very brief. I wanted to speak on the bylaws. One of the problems, I'm finding out that under bylaws, that the Board of Education is not popular. One of the concerns I'm having is for too long, and I worked in the school system for thirty, over thirty-three years. I was here in my uni for over thirty years. It seems like when people file a complaint, it never come to the board, the committees never hear it. They always work here and, I hate to say it, but it look like the chairman give it to the city. The city doing all the jobs now. They are fighting us, fight all of us, everybody. The Cooperation Council spent his time over here, and the board got two lawyers getting big money. They're not doing nothing. They are on us, I think about six or seven people. They got the Cooperation Council on us. Now, if you all gonna hire the Cooperation Council guy as lawyer, you should bring him over to the board. You're not following your bylaw, you're not following your Code of Ethics. If you look at your bylaw, it say the Board of Education in control. Then look at your bylaw, ethnic violation. How can a Cooperation Council guy come up here and represent the board when he signed a contract with the superintendent? That's a compit entry. And I want to say to you, both, and they've been treating a lot, and it ain't only me, but we got a lot of complaint, the Cooperation Council spent all his time, then y'all have to reimburse him. Why you got Cannon and them other lawyers doing nothing? He didn't hand it to them. Now, I'm going to say right now, and I'm not here tonight, because we are in a lot of battles in the courts now. Not only me, a lot of people in the court, costing the board millions of dollars. We want to settle the cases. The Cooperation Council come in, well, tell the jury, we don't want to settle it. We don't want to settle it. It just costing a lot of money. Now, I want to say this tonight, I'm going to say to all nine board members, if you all don't straighten it out, I'm going to file with the state estimate board up in Hartford. That's what they got for public officials. And I'm bringing y'all up. You all are elected to follow the bylaws and follow the Code of Ethics. You are not doing it. And I'm telling you right now, it costing a lot of money. Fighting, we, people want to settle. Now, the day I understand, one of the guys come down, and I'm going to say this to run it right. I went to the mayor and I talked with him. I said, why are the Cooperation Council come here fighting all us people? I said, Doug jobs to take care of the city. They got all the jobs down there. And I want you both to look, this is a serious matter. This is no thing to play with. And what I want to like to say, you got committed, all the committees, you to hear our complaint. You come over to complain, all, and all you do is say...
You're at three minutes.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm giving one little minute, then I'm going to be quiet, Mr. Marvis. The problem is every time something come out, when the complaint come out, and I hate to say this, and I'm not trying to be personal, Mr. Lawrence go to the paper and tell them, do some thing, do some, why are you nine member board? Why are you, why are you nine member board?
Three twenty.
You are should have supposed to look out and hear our complaints, not my complaint, but dozen of complaint. So what I'm asking you all to get back to me and let me know...
Three and a half, Mr. Speaker.
What I want you to do, Mr. Marvis, is get back to us right away. So we will have to take the action to make this wrong correct. Thank you very much.
And that concludes our public comments.
All right, Chairman Edgerton, a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters. Mr. Kasimis moves. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Could a public announcement, quick? We don't have public announcements on here.
It's not on the agenda.
Do I have to move for that, or?
Yeah, you can make a motion if you want.
I just want to remind everyone about NEF on Thursday night. Good time and good cause.
Six days, just do it anyway.
You made it. Sorry for being out of program.
All right, so is there a second to this Kasimis's motion? Seconds, all in favor, please indicate, and the motion is unanimously adopted, and we are in executive session. The five-minute reset has its tradition.